Hi, welcome to Studio Stillwater. I'm Michelle Charles.
And I am Chris Peters.
And today we're here with Carly Santelli, candidate for Stillwater Board of Education.
Ward one.
Yes, hello.
Everybody gets to vote.
Everybody gets to vote. It is a citywide election, although the candidates represent a certain area. How, how does that work Carly? What area of town do you live in?
I live pretty close to Couch Park, actually. Like, it's a 20-minute walk to Couch Park. It's really nice. On a nice day, we've bike ride to there and everything. Just almost like country living, but still inside city limits. So, kind of the best of both worlds.
That sounds really nice. So, so basically Ward one is more on the east side of town?
Southeast, yes.
Okay, okay, very good. And what school do your kids attend?
My son attends Highland Park and my daughter is not quite old enough to attend, so she's not in one yet.
Okay, well, we always start with a really basic question, which is, what brought you to Stillwater?
Short answer is my parents. I was actually born here in the hospital, just right up the street. Went to Stillwater my entire life, pre-K at Will Rogers, because they didn't have it at all the schools at the time. And then Richmond, and then I went through middle school, junior high and high school here and met my husband when we were both in eighth grade at the junior high here.
Oh, wow.
I had a huge crush on his best friends.
Isn't that how it always works?
Right? Sometimes it does, yeah.
And we ended up just falling in love like a decade later, so we have two kids now.
Very good. Now, so he grew up in Stillwater as well?
Yes, he was actually born in Midwest City, but he went to school here, too.
Okay, so is most of your family still around here?
Yes. Yes, the furthest way that my mom's side has gotten has been Cushing and Oklahoma City. But otherwise, we're all in Oklahoma.
Okay, so we can, we can establish that you know the town well.
Yes.
Very good. Let me think here. So what kinds of stuff did you do when you were going to school in Stillwater? What kind of activities were you involved in?
In school, I was in art club, I was in acting classes, I did kind of a little bit of everything. I was kind of like, not really a popular kid, but I also wasn't like an outcast. I always, at the time, thought I was. Like, I didn't really think I had that many friends, but after getting out, I've realized, maybe I really wasn't the outcast. I was just more accepting of everyone. I did, back then, we had a club called SWAT. That was students against, working against tobacco companies. And we were in that.
I think I had a friend, I grew up in West Virginia, that high school age, and they were really going against Kraft. Like Kraft macaroni and cheese, because Kraft is owned by the same company, like parent company as one of the big tobacco companies or something like that. Yeah, so I remember saying, going around saying, you've got to boycott, cancel Kraft macaroni and cheese.
Oh, wow. That's probably tough to do. That's a tough sell.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how well that worked.
I don't think it worked very well. Not around here, anyway.
No. Now, my daughter was in SWAT. I had one of my, one of my youngest daughters was in SWAT and a lot of their activities were going around the parks and picking up cigarette butts and then taking pictures with, you know. And with all the big bags of cigarette butts, because there are a very large number of them and people don't realize that they're not biodegradable. They just sit there forever.
Filters are on.
Actually, thinking back on it, we, my group at one point went to Couch Park and we cleaned up around the pool.
Oh, wow.
It was pretty bad, actually.
Probably all along the fence line?
Oh, yeah. Fence line and right outside the gate and everything. It was eye-opening.
So, so what made you like want to be a part of, of that group instead of, you know, a different club or something?
Part of me is my best friend. The other part was my parents smoked pretty heavily up until right before I turned 18, actually. And that just, I remembered when I was like 11, walked into our living room, I saw this cloud of smoke, like I could see the layer, and I'm just like, I'm never touching a cigarette. And so that's one of my accomplishments. I actually have never smoked, so.
Wow.
That's also why I decided to join.
Okay.
Did your parents stop?
They did shortly.
Because of like your?
I don't know if it was because of, but they, on their 19th wedding anniversary, they went to one of the hypnosis, stop smoking things and.
And it worked?
And it seemed to work, because a couple of weeks later, I was in a car wreck and my mom passed every gas station. I can get cigarettes there, I can get cigarettes there, I can get cigarettes there. And she didn't stop. So, and that was like the most stressful thing she could have gone through at the time, like two weeks later.
Good job, mom.
Right? I mean, it is hard for people. It is really, really hard for people.
And they're still smoke-free.
That is wonderful. That is really wonderful.
I'm really proud of them for that, so.
I, that's a big accomplishment. It is. My husband recently quit dipping, which he'd been doing since he was 13.
Oh, wow.
Yes, I mean, because they start that young, either like playing baseball or fishing or hanging out behind the back fence with their friends.
In high school, we had just moved into the neighborhood and I had moved in right next to a house with another kid my age in high school. And we're hanging out on the front porch and he brings out this bag of a long cut and he's like, you know, here, you want some? And I mean, in West Virginia, I'm sure it's somewhere to hear like every, everybody smoked or dipped or something, men and women there. And I was like, sure, and I put it in my mouth and it was so acidic and like burning and I was like, oh, nope.
Yeah, I just couldn't stand the secondhand smoke, so that's why I decided I wasn't going to make it.
So you were involved in SWAT and you've stayed here in Stillwater? So you're, you're married, you've got a couple of kids? What was your, what was your upbringing like here in Stillwater? What, what other kinds, what kinds of things did your family do?
We were very outdoorsy. We gardened, like vegetable garden, flower garden. We would always go hunting for deer primarily. Fishing every summer, camping every, almost every chance we got. Like, we were pretty outdoorsy. We didn't really get too much into the hiking. I think my parents just didn't want to deal with three kids whining that their feet hurt, so I don't blame them. But otherwise, yeah, we were pretty outdoorsy, just kind of did a little bit of everything.
I'm assuming maybe you still do that with your family?
We're starting to get more into it. My youngest just turned three, so we've kind of laid back a little bit, because I really don't want to deal with that, that kind of stuff with a toddler.
Oh, yeah.
Not fun, but we did our first camp out with her this past fall and she did phenomenal. So I think we're going to start trying to pick that up again.
Where were some of your favorite places to go, like here in Oklahoma?
Here in Stillwater, I'm always a sucker for Blackwell and McMurtry. Beyond that, Keystone is a favorite.
Okay, so growing up as kind of an outdoorsy kid in Stillwater, going all the way through the school system, how do you think that formed who you are as a person?
That is a really good question. I know I just, I care about nature. I make sure that, like, we were cleaning up our garden the other day and I found a little rough earth snake and I made sure to protect him because my parents were coming to till up my garden for me and I didn't want him to get harmed. So I kept him nice and safe and let him come back into my garden. I just.
Because they're, they're, they're good for that, right?
They're very good.
Keep out other things that are not good.
He's just a little like foot-long snake, so he was, he just eats worms and grubs and the things that would kill your plants.
There you go.
I just, I don't know really, because I just, I haven't been anywhere else, so I haven't really had a chance to see if Stillwater itself is what made me me, or if I'm just me because I'm me. I just, I'm pretty open and.
Like, it's both. You're definitely a product of Stillwater and of the community. Yeah, if you've not really lived anywhere else, then you may not really be able to compare.
Yeah.
Oh, no, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I like that.
So, having spent your whole life here, I mean, what do you love about it? What is it that's made you stay?
Mostly family. Beyond that, I just, I love the friendliness. It's everything I know is here. I've been in my son's school. The teachers have all been phenomenal. My teachers from when I was in school have been phenomenal. They've kept me kind of grounded. They helped me kind of maybe shape who I am also. Yeah.
So are you involved in PTA and things like that? Are you able to?
My daughter's was born when my son was in kindergarten, so I didn't join PTA then.
That's understandable. You're a little busy.
A little bit. And she's just now starting to get a lot more independent, so I haven't really, being perfectly honest, been in PTA. I haven't really followed the meetings. I've, on my school's PTA Facebook page, but I haven't made it to any of the meetings because children, especially little ones. But I, I need to start getting more active and I intend to do that.
Well, that leads me to another question then. How easy is it for people like you, because there are a lot of people in your situation, to really stay up on what's going on with their kids and with the schools?
With social media and everything, it has actually been easier, I think, than maybe how it was 10, 20 years ago. Because you can actually just follow their Facebook pages, assuming each school has one, and or even just the Facebook page of Stillwater Public Schools. I can text my son's teacher right now if I wanted to and say, hey, is there anything he needs to work on? And she's been amazing, as have his IEP teachers and all of it. It's just, I'd say it's pretty easy, to be perfectly honest.
So, modern communication. There's no longer the teacher writing a note home. Give this to your parents. And they're like, yeah, no, I'm not going to give that to my parents.
Exactly, because my son had been kind of goofing off in some of his Zoom meetings and his, on a couple of his assignments and his teacher would just send me a text, hey, Tony did this in his assignment. I'm sending it back. So I knew what he needed to actually work on.
Yeah, kids don't know now. They, they used to have an advantage being the, being the messenger.
Well, and also they had maybe almost a whole week, because the parents had to wait till the Thursday folder came out.
Yeah, and I know they still have that, but I think COVID has kind of made that a little harder.
Yeah.
People aren't exchanging pieces of paper as freely as we used to.
And, you know, you can actually go attend a school board meeting or, you know, virtually, you can at least watch, which I remember the first time I watched them. I was used to watching city council once, you know, they've got their agenda and it's, you know, maybe there's some lengthy presentations, but some of the pre-COVID ones. I can't say I watched too many before COVID. Obviously, that suddenly all turned our attention to like, oh, we need to, we need to pay attention to this. We need to figure out what they're deciding. And the, the meetings are just so much like longer and like approve this budget, approve this budget and then, and they always bury the, what everybody is really there for, you know, like the, the, talking about either the, the next mass stuff or whatever where I'm like, okay, just do everybody a favor and just put that, bump that up early on the agenda so we can just get it over with and then you can go, you know, approve the construction budget for, you know, the middle school gymnasium or whatever.
But then you don't know what's going on for everything else.
I guess.
So I see, it's a double-edged sword. I see both sides.
It's like the grocery store putting the milk in the back of the store. So you have to walk past everything else to get to it. That's what it is.
Yes.
It's to make people stay through the whole meeting.
Snacks.
Yeah. I think that, I wonder if they really have thought about it that way.
That's perfect.
I, I know at the city council meetings, they will, like, say you have, you know, 15 people wearing matching t-shirts from the Westwood Neighborhood Association or any other group. I always think of Westwood because they were so effective in organizing and they did have t-shirts. I always tell the, anyone on city, or anyone who wants to have an impact on city council or an issue in the city, get matching t-shirts. And all start going to city council meetings and sitting together and all of a sudden you're a movement, but anyway. Yeah, I mean, it's amazing how effective it is. But anyway, what the city council will do is when they have one of those movements in the audience, they will go ahead and take whatever that business item is and move it up and get it out of the way so that those folks don't have to sit through an hour and a half of presentations to talk about what they want to talk about.
Yeah, well, because the, the public discussion portion is always like at the same, like after the consent docket or whatever.
Right.
And so if you're going to have 10 people up there talking about something and then that's not like the next subject that they're going to talk about, like, you might as well just kind of do it all together.
Sure.
In, in the same.
Right.
Connect the, the two conversations.
Yeah, exactly. But anyway, long story short, school board doesn't necessarily do that. A lot of times you do have to sit through quite a bit of other business in order to hear the thing that might be more controversial that we know a lot of people are, are tuning in for. So, I mean, talk to me, you've talked about your love of nature and, you know, your, your family and everything, but what, I mean, what types of things are important to you as a person?
My children for one, obviously. I just want what's best for them. Beyond that, I just, I want what's best for the most amount of people. Get everyone on a level playing field, just treat everyone equally. Just, I'm, I'm just a pretty much, if you don't do bad, you're okay in my book, even if we don't necessarily agree. So.
So do you feel like the playing field isn't necessarily level and?
Not entirely. I, it is starting to get better, but it's taking maybe longer than I would expect. Not necessarily through the schools, but in just in general, life in general.
How do all of these things that we've talked about, how do they lead you to wanting to serve on the school board?
My biggest thing on that is that I feel that we need a better representation of parents and guardians who have kids who are actually enrolled in Stillwater schools at this time. Whether it was pre-COVID or during COVID or hopefully soon post-COVID, I think we need to know what the parents are feeling, going through, that have to deal with the plans that the school board puts in place. That's my biggest concern is maybe they see, oh, okay, let's, let's do this. This sounds reasonable, but maybe it's not for five-year-olds in kindergarten.
So, so how do you, so obviously you would be putting on that hat of, I'm a parent with young kids in the school system that plans on, you know, being in the school system for another, you know, 15 years or longer. So how do you think being on the school board, you would help represent other parents besides just being one yourself?
I kind of pride myself on being an open ear, listening to all sides and then making a decision based on the facts at hand. Both sides of the aisle, just everything, get all the information I can and then present my opinion, my vote, whatever, based on what I think will benefit the most people. Whether it be the most people in the school, whether it be the most community members, whether it be the most people in my family, just whatever I feel fits the most.
Trying to find that, uh, greater good.
Yeah.
Line, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
It, it seems like this year has really underscored the connection between the schools and the community. I mean, all the important roles that the schools fill in people's lives and kids' lives, and then also how the community can impact the school district. And does it feel to you like there's a good intersection there? Like that, that communication between the two is good enough?
It can definitely improve. I think there's adequate connection. I think it needs to be a little bit better, but stronger.
Are you ready to reply to a lot of emails?
I know I'm not going to be. I know there's several that won't agree with me at all, so I, I'm going to have to be able to put a level head on, but yes, I think I can.
And how thick is your skin?
Which in the past, I don't know if that would have been really a question for a school board member.
It's not been a controversial, well, I mean, okay, there are always people who take issue with decisions at the schools. There, there's a long and storied history, right? Of people who, you know, feel like something needs to be done differently or better. There needs to, I've, I've always heard, needs to be better communication. I mean, that's just a, a theme, because, because we've seen how big an impact the schools do have on our lives. But it seems like this last year, of course, the school board's really been kind of a lightning rod and has been taking quite a bit of, you know, personal abuse, to be honest.
Mute your phone, Michelle.
I thought I did.
See, this is the best part. We can edit this out. Or leave it in and just embarrass her.
I'm cool with that, too. Actually, one time at a city council meeting, there were a bunch of people fighting. They were arguing about a bunch of stuff. It was a very contentious issue. And this guy came up and he was one of the guys who was just going to read him the riot act, as he did just about every week. And I forgot to silence my phone. And when I, and then all of a sudden my phone went off as he walked up and adjusted his mic. And it was the theme music for The Good, The Bad and The Ugly was my ringtone at the time. And everybody in the entire room just stopped and laughed, because it just seemed like the perfect music at the perfect time. And then, of course, and I'm diving for my phone, frantically trying to silence it. It was humiliating, but it was hilarious.
That's awesome. That's a great story.
Anyway, so, yeah, so these, I actually forgot what I was going to ask you now. I got sidetracked.
Thick skin, I believe.
Thick skin, thank you. Let's go back to the thick skin. So, yeah, I mean, are you prepared for that? Because it's been challenging for some of the members.
I honestly don't know, to be honest, because I, I kind of am an empath, so I might have a rough time on that front. But I also am pretty good at just letting things roll off until it just gets to be too much. So, half a dozen one, six of the other.
Yeah, I can see, you know, you've, you've got somebody that, you know, contact you and is disagrees on maybe a vote you, you made.
Right.
And then you, you want to like, okay, listen to them, right? And try to take it in and then hopefully respond in some way, maybe that's satisfactory or not to them. And then I'm sure it's the, they keep coming at you, then that's where it's, I, I don't.
Yeah.
There's, there's part of me that with dealing with this whole change and a lot more communication having to come from, especially teachers, the parents via email. Like, I've, we've got a kid that goes to Westwood, we've got a kid that goes to Richmond. And the communication styles between those two schools are night and day.
Yeah.
I'm not saying one is better than the other.
Yeah.
They're just, they're just.
Totally different.
Different. And I, I feel like all these teachers now that are having to email more, I'm guessing they, they do not enjoy it. But I just want to take like a OSU, like PR student or somebody and be like, okay, they do your emails now. You tell them what needs to be in there and they will write it for you and they will make it concise, bullet points, links, all these things. And like, they need additional resources, I think.
I think, yeah, I can see that, because.
Because I don't, I don't think we can go back to before where we were hardly communicating at all.
No, no.
Well, and one of the things that's come up from some of the other candidates is how some of this stuff that we've had to do to adapt to the pandemic may turn out to be lasting changes, because it turns out that there are maybe some benefits to some of it. Everything wasn't necessarily a negative. We've had to, you know, develop some new strategies that may be helpful for different people. What do you see in the, you know, coming from this that might be helpful or that you would like to see continue?
I like being able to text my son's teachers, so I definitely think that maybe would be something to keep. I know maybe that might not be feasible for all the teachers and everyone, but that's something I would really like to keep, just even if not text, call. Personally, call them. And that way, if you're doing homework at 6 o'clock at night, hey, just quick text. My son's having issues with algebra. What are your suggestions? Or whatever. But not everyone will get an email at 6 o'clock at night. If it's on their school email, it'll go to their school box, which might be locked in their classroom. I'd also like to see better internet availability, because not everyone has that ability to pay for that. Like, my family does not. We only recently just got it, because we finally got a better income coming in. And we were using the school's hotspot and that was spotty at best.
Really?
Like, we could only use it in like three of the rooms in our house, because our house was set up, is set up kind of strange. Kind of strange, but like for some reason, our son's room, it was like a dead zone for the hotspot, even if it was right on top of the Chromebook.
So that, but that was probably like a week from the cell phone tower that it's connecting to.
Been some sort of technical issue, not necessarily that device itself, but.
Sure, yeah. Well, yeah, it, it depends on like your house. You might have some, some metal or a refrigerator or something that just bounces that cell phone signal around and you don't get it.
Well, and that's something that really hasn't been discussed that much, because it's been kind of presented as, you know, we got these hotspots and this is filling those gaps. This is providing at least a basic level of service for people who need it. But I haven't heard anyone before say that even with the hotspot, we had problems.
Yeah.
So, that's a really good point.
I don't know with, with, with your child, but with ours, I mean, there's, the teachers send a lot of videos to watch, too.
Yeah.
And I, I remember, we were having some internet
load.
Issues, yeah. And if the, the video doesn't load or it's really slow and you're like having to try to scrub back to like, what did they say? And then you're like, I just want to go back 30 seconds and then it's like buffering for two minutes. Yeah.
That sounds really, really frustrating.
Yeah, it, it kind of really was.
So what has it been like having your, I mean, so were you enrolled in in-person traditional? Okay, so what, and your little boy is in what grade?
Third.
Third now. Okay, so what was that like, having him do the distance learning this year?
It made me realize I never really wanted to be a teacher.
I think a lot of people, it really solidified that for them.
In elementary school, that was my first job I wanted, was a teacher. I wanted to be a teacher, but being his home teacher, I was like, no, I can't do this. I don't have the patience and it's my own kid. I, I can imagine the stress that a teacher has with 24 kids goes under. And so I applaud them, like, y'all are heroes. I just, it's been tough, because I've been also having to keep my toddler out of his hair so that he could do his schoolwork. And she just wants to play with her brother. She doesn't understand why he's not able to play.
Oh, yeah, because he's home. That must, that's, that's, it's like summer vacation all year round.
Exactly.
Right. So, what do you wish that people would understand about what it's been like for parents who had their kids home and who, where they would normally send them to school?
That it's not just all rainbows and everything, that we get to spend all day with our kid. Some of us need that time so that we can clean the house or we can get dinner started or go grocery shopping. It's a lot harder to go grocery shopping when you have all your kids and no one else to watch them, because you're either working at home or you're a stay-at-home parent who's helping with school. Not all of us can afford to send our kids to daycare, so just, I just wish more people were understanding of everyone's choices and, yeah.
It's been a struggle for people, for, for sure. I know it really has.
I know. It has been pretty stressful for me and from other parents that I've spoke with.
Well, and, and for so many parents, it seems like instead of, you know, you think of, okay, your kid goes to school, say from 8:30 to 2:30 or 3:00. And then they're kind of done for the day, maybe have a little bit of homework or something like that. But when you have them at home, it seems like it, it maybe isn't quite as compressed, but it stretches out and takes parts of your whole day. It's almost like it's never over for some people.
It, it really isn't. It, there have been days where I'd feed my son and daughter breakfast and I'd say, I'd let them watch TV before, eat their breakfast at, say, 10 o'clock, because stay at home. We just took a slow day. We didn't have a set at times. So at like 10 o'clock, I'd say, okay, Tony, let's go. We just took a slow day. We didn't have a set times. So at like ten o'clock, I'd say, okay, Tony, let's go start your school. And it, we'd be fighting all day, all day, past dinner to get school done sometimes. Uh, that might be not necessarily the norm, because my son is autistic. But that could be part of our struggles. It could just be coincidence. So, but yeah.
If you look at the number of kids in Stillwater Public Schools who are on IEPs though, it's a really high percentage. I don't have the number. Right in my head at the moment, but I know it's a good chunk of the kids.
Yeah.
Have some kind of accommodation.
I, I was on IEP for the longest time also, so it wouldn't surprise me.
Right. And, and that complicates things too, because I mean.
Yeah.
And IEP, for anyone who isn't familiar with that, is an individualized education plan.
Yeah.
Where basically a kid just needs some kind of accommodation or some type of extra help of some sort. In order to, to be able to do the curriculum or do the schoolwork. And can you imagine trying to deliver that remotely?
Yeah. Which is why I give the teachers so many props. They work so hard. And have been so understanding, at least in my experience, maybe not at other schools, but in my experience, they've been so amazing. Especially with all the hurdles they've had to deal with this year.
Sure. So what pushed you to throw your hat in the ring for school board? What finally pushed you over the edge?
I just. It's really hard to say. I think. The really big thing is I had been thinking about it when they announced the days that you could go. I'm like, should I? Should I not? And then the, on the last day. That was open for signing up for it. I woke up with knots in my stomach and I'm like, this is the right choice. When I just felt that, that almost sick, but you just. That stress, nervous kinda knots in your stomach. I was like, and that's kinda how I decide a lot of things sometimes is. Is that the right choice? Is it making me kinda tense? If it's making me kinda tense, maybe it is the right path. So.
How, uh, does your like family and friends and stuff play into those types of choices? I mean, do they, I'm sure you're not like keeping it all to yourself. You're talking to family and stuff. I'm like, I think I'm gonna do this.
All been pretty supportive. I was, I kept it kinda on the down low to begin with, just cause I didn't need the negativity. Don't do it kinda thing. Cause I, I just felt that there would be a lot of that from my friends and family. In fact, I was actually kinda nervous telling my parents.
Yeah.
Hey, so I'm doing this, um, what are your thoughts? And they're like, okay, cool. Why? Go for it. But yeah, overall, they've been pretty supportive, so.
Good. You, you think you got their vote?
I, I hope so, but I'm not gonna say, hey, go vote for me. If you don't vote for me, I'm not coming to see you anymore. I'm not gonna do that.
You can't see the grandkids.
Yeah, the holidays are gonna be so awkward.
Right? I'm not gonna ask him, hey, did you vote for me? No.
So I mean, if you get on the school board, what are you hoping to accomplish? What do you really wanna see happen?
Um, outside of COVID, I would like to see a better focus on STEM and the arts. Because it's getting better, but with all the budget cuts at the state level. It's been cut back so much from even when I was in high school, that it's actually kind of heartbreaking. Like that's where I had most of my fun was in those type of classes, in those environments. And with the budgets cutting back, it's harder to get into that kinda thing. I'd like to see that kinda thing at lower grade levels, too. Uh, with COVID, I just want everyone to be safe. I want there to be proper PPE for everyone that needs it. I want the teachers and the staff, not just the teachers, to have the vaccines if they so choose. I just, I wanna make sure that we go back to school safely. And I'm probably one that thinks that we're going back too soon, to be perfectly honest.
Yeah, cause that's next week.
Yeah. And that does make me nervous, but I, I can't be. Full-time, stay at home, watch my kid do his schoolwork on edgenuity for the rest of the year. So I'm keeping him with his in-person.
It's, it's interesting to me that you, you know, are expressing concerns about going back to school too early. But at the same time, it's been tough having your kids at home. And I think a lot of times, um, you know, there's this idea that people who are struggling with the, with the homeschooling. Aspect of it, you know, they just want the kids back in school. They don't care. They just want, you know, and there's some people. Who, you know, have just said, you know, this is better for the kids, get them back in school. They're not likely to get sick. You know, they just think they should have been in the whole time.
Yeah.
So it's interesting that like both things are hard for you.
Yes, yes. Um. I just, I really do think it's too soon. I used to work at the middle school, like right out of high school. Worked at the middle school here and. Lord, do I know that kids are gross. I was a janitor and I will leave it at that. It was gross. That said, younger kids are grosser typically. And I just, I know the kids don't necessarily follow boundaries or follow all the rules. So I think that we've been following the color-coded map for the past seven months. We've been doing the distance learning for this past seven months. We've been going to fi- two and five-day in-person school. As the numbers allow, why not finish out the school year? It's two more months. Why can't we just finish it the way we've been doing it? So that, that's been my biggest issue with this is we're changing it up again in the last nine weeks. Why?
Gotcha.
So, and I know my son does better when he's in person, cause he'll have that one-on-one. He can go see his IEP teachers. He can ask his teachers directly for help. He, he has all that in-person. But I, I still don't think it's quite soon, or we, we really shouldn't go this soon, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It really underscores for me how tough some of these decisions are.
So, but by time you would possibly be on the board, we're gonna be less than like a month or so out from the regular end of school. So you, you may not be able to like influence things, but then I, I know there's gotta be other co- topics of conversation of like. Do we need to somehow have school during the summer? Like, how do we catch all these kids up?
Yeah. I actually know for a fact that my son's school, Highland Park, is doing a summer school option. I don't know if the other five elementary schools are doing that.
I have not heard anything.
I just, it was mentioned during our parent-teacher conference, I think two weeks ago. So, yeah.
Interesting.
There's been discussion at the district level about how, offering summer school as, as a way to help kids who have fallen a little bit behind, get caught up. Before be- the beginning of the next year, because you know, there's been that concern about kids falling behind and then this just kind of rolling forward, right? And them struggling the rest of the way through, if they miss some of those foundational things.
Yeah, and I would think, I mean, at some point before the summer, we'll have results of state testing.
Which, you know, everyone's super excited about that, right?
Yeah, I.
Our teachers told us, made us feel like it, they're, that we have to do it to get a measurement, which I understand. But that it's not necessarily going to be factored into, does your kid like progress the next grade?
That's almost kinda what I understood from our student, our parent-teacher conference also. Cause that's been my biggest concern. I actually debated holding my son back before he started this year. Because of how COVID ended.
Yeah.
His second grade, cause I knew, and I got reassurance that he has special. Things set up, so he won't necessarily be held back.
Yeah.
But I just, I knew that with the state testing in third grade. If you fall below a certain level, you're held back regardless.
Yeah.
But COVID has kinda, I guess, lifted a little bit of that restriction from my understanding, but I don't know for sure.
I would hope so. You can't test to the same like.
Exactly.
Uh, if you haven't had the, the same, uh, possibility for the same type of instruction.
Right.
That the state tests are, you know, assumed.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the thing is, uh, some of these are federal requirements.
Yeah.
And so they're doing it just to meet those federal requirements. But I think it's, it's pretty much been accepted that almost across the country.
Yeah.
That, you know, this has been an unusual year and that we're just, this is gonna be a blip on that timeline, right? We're not going, these, these are not going to be your usual types of measurements. This has been an unusual period. I mean, I think they might actually be helpful in determining exactly how much the pandemic. And the things we've had to do to get through it have set kids back, so that they've got a measure.
They actually did.
Or maybe how, how little it set them back and how well they actually did. Because every kid's different and some are actually probably thriving.
Yeah.
Under the new setup, whereas others are really, really struggling. So.
For sure.
It, it'll be interesting to see what the results are, but I don't think they're gonna be held against anyone as much as they would have normally been.
Yeah, that, that was my understanding as well.
Yeah, I told the kids, I was like, you're gonna be an asterix kid. There's gonna be a little asterix next to, uh, your, your graduation. Uh, and hopefully it reads like, uh, you survive distance learning or.
Right.
Virtual learning or being at home with your parents, whatever that is.
Survive twenty-twenty. Congratulations.
Yeah, yeah. And so then when colleges or whatever are looking at that, I mean, they're like, oh, yeah, of course.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, you would hope so, especially with the kids that are like in high school where they're having to try to, I mean, this is.
Well, they're, they're going for scholarships.
Yeah, you're trying to get into colleges, you're trying to get scholarships and things like that. Luckily, so many people are kind of in the same boat. So I mean, ho- hopefully it's all kind of leveled out, uh, you know, across the country.
Yeah.
But, okay, so we've talked about a lot of stuff. Uh, what, what would you want people to know? What's, what's some, something we haven't asked you about that you would want people to know about you?
Okay, I've, I've got a, I've got an easier question.
Okay, he's got, okay, you have a minute to think. You can ask, you can answer Chris's question first.
Okay, um, so, uh, we talked about like, uh, you and your family, like doing camping. Um, and then now that we're friends on Facebook, I've noticed, uh, she's also in the local Pokemon Go group. So is that something that you also do? Uh, the three-year-old obviously is probably.
She actually really likes Pikachu, so.
Okay.
Yeah, my son has his own account that I kinda just watch over and he, that way he doesn't mess up my account, but.
So how long have you been playing?
I've been playing since the very beginning. I took a very, like, maybe a six-month hiatus. Because my phone at the time was very finicky and I wasn't able to play for more than like thirty minutes at a time without reloading. But otherwise, yeah.
Even on a newer phone, the game is still pretty glitchy, but.
Not quite as bad as that phone.
I stopped playing for years and we picked it up again during the pandemic. And, uh, my partner, uh, I was like, you know, we should, we should play. You know, we wanted to, it was a weird thing of, we're stuck inside, but we got outside. Like, you know, outside is free, outside is safe.
Yeah.
And, um, and so I was like, let's, let's go back and try this Pokemon thing, cause my son, he's in third grade.
Okay.
And, uh, he's super into it. Of course, now that we got all into it, he's not as into it at all, you know.
Well, it's not as cool now.
Yeah, it's not as cool now. And I guess your old man is now like, hey, uh, so what do you think of that, uh?
Charmander.
Yeah, a Charmander or, uh.
It's the only one I know, that one in Pikachu.
And he would, you know, then he'll go tell me like what region they're from and all this stuff, and I still don't know any of that stuff. Um, uh, but it's been fun, cause then that like got us out, got us walking around and stuff. And then so now my, my partner's, uh, she's a, she's not in the Facebook group, but, uh, she's actually like ahead of me. She's like a level head.
Oh, no.
Well, it's cause she had the advantage, she works at OSU.
Ah.
And there's a Poki stop right by her and we, we bought one of those little automated things.
Little button things, yeah.
So you could just sit there and, you know, every five minutes, it's doing it, doing all the work for you. It's amazing.
Kinda jealous of that.
I know. I need a Pokemon stop by my house.
Right?
You know, when this.
Closest one to me is half a mile, so.
When the game first blew up, we actually set up a Poki stop at block thirty-four. The news press set one up for a while. And we had, we had a little event over there to get people to show up.
Yeah, I remember the, the first one was we went to obviously campus. The, uh, Centennial Garden by the Student Union. We're like, oh, it shows there's some Poki stops there, go there. And there was like fifty other people all there, like the, it was that first like weekend or whatever that it was open. And I was like, everybody here is playing this game. And it was, everybody there was playing the same game.
That, I just miss seeing that so much.
Yeah.
Like I still get a smile when I see someone walking down the sidewalk downtown and they're, have their game going. I'm like, yay.
Yeah, downtown's a perfect place, cause you can just like walk on the sidewalk, walk around, make like a loop, walk yourself like a mile. Cause part of the game too is you gotta, you gotta walk to earn, uh, different aspects.
Okay.
Of, of the game. So it really encourages, and of course, they, they changed it for the pandemic. Before it really, you didn't do much if you're just sitting inside your house.
Exactly, yeah. I love playing that game. I was actually playing before I was heading on my way here, so.
Yep, I've, I've got a, uh, um, an EV that I've gotta walk ten kilometers. That's the other differences. It's all in, it's all in metrics. And so it's like, okay, my block, okay, I can walk around the block. That's about one kilometer. It's, it's been really interesting.
See, I can't even think in kilometers. They've been threatening me with the metric system since I was a child.
Yeah. Luckily, it measures everything for us, so it's just like, go out there.
You don't have to do the math.
Yeah, yeah. Um, but it's pretty fun, so.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very cool. Okay, so back to my hard question.
Yes.
Oh, no, it, it doesn't have to be that hard. Just, I mean, you know, it's just the last chance to tell people a little bit about yourselves. Anything that we haven't thought to ask or anything you wanna emphasize?
I just, I'm a pretty easygoing person. If we get along, great. If we don't, okay, you do you. I'm not gonna make anyone be my friend or any of that, just. I don't like bullying. I don't like rude. I don't like any of that. Just, let's just be cool. Treat everyone equally. Um, and I hope everyone actually votes for who they feel. Fits their beliefs. Whether we agree on everything or not, that doesn't matter. Just who do you think will up, uphold your beliefs the most?
Okay, alright. Well, thank you so much, Carly. I really appreciate you coming in. It was nice getting to know you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks again to Carly Santelli for joining us. Up next, Michelle and I sit down with city council candidates Christie Hawkins and Ariel Ross. We have an in-depth conversation about the various issues facing Stillwater. Learn how they would spend a one million dollar gift on the community and hear their thoughts on everyone's favorite topic, zoning. We hope you join us for these critical conversations. Thanks to the Stillwater News Press for their support in this endeavor. I truly believe this is just the beginning of a local content revival in our community. If you find value in these conversations, please consider becoming a Studio Stillwater Community member on Patreon. We have a lot of ideas for our next series of podcasts that we would love to get your feedback on. Go to patreon.com/studiosstillwater to join. You can get in touch with us via email, studiosstillwaterok@gmail.com. Or DM us on Twitter, Facebook and Instagram. We love to hear from our listeners. Finally, check out the show notes. There you will find links to items we discussed on the show. Thanks again for joining us. Until next time.